I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission's regular meeting of Tuesday, September the 5th, 2017. First item is Pledge of Allegiance. Cindy, would you like to lead us to the pledge tonight?
Welcome back.
(inaudible) To the citizens of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Chair Kistner?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Knutson?
Present.
Monette?
Here.
Pont.
Here.
The next item is Public Forum. This is an opportunity for the public to address the Commission on items of interest to the public that are not listed on this agenda. Because of restrictions imposed by the Brown Act, the Commission may not engage in discussions nor take action on matters not described on the agenda. Please observe the time limit of three minutes. Are there any public comment? Public comment is closed. Consent items. Member of the Commission or the public may ask that any items be considered individually for purposes of considering alternative action for extended discussion or for public comment. Unless this is done, one motion may be used to adopt all recommended actions. The only item we have tonight is the approval of the August 15th minutes. Does anyone want to?
Move the overwhelmingly large consent agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Monette?
Yes.
Pont?
Yes.
Knutson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hardy?
Absent.
Chair Kistner?
Yes. The next item is Public Hearings, and before we start these, I would like to take these out of order. I would like to do 5.2, and then 5.3, and then 5.1, if that's acceptable to everyone. 5.2 is Request For Design Review Approval To Construct A Two-Story Single Family Residence On The Vacant Lot, Flag Lot At 1045 Pratt Avenue In Northeast St. Helena In A Medium-Density Residential Zoning District. May I have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair and Commission. Just I'll be very brief. The project before you is a request for design review approval to construct a single-family home at 1045 Pratt Avenue. It's a flag lot, and the project was continued from the August 15th agenda for redesign. The Planning Commission at that time specifically requested that the residence be essentially flipped 180 degrees to redistribute the massing closer to an adjacent parcel and further away from some of the other property lines. The applicant has revised those plans and adjusted the site plan slightly to accommodate the fire turnaround. As revised, the project continues to meet or exceed the setback standards imposed by the final map approval for that flag lot. You'll recall that there were some very specific setbacks placed on that lot, and the project does meet those, with the exception of the garage setbacks, which meet those prescribed for the medium-density residential. So, the project, the home meets all the required setbacks identified in the final map. The garage encroaches slightly into, I think it's the eastern setback, which was allowed by the resolution approving the final map, subject to Planning Commission approval. Staff does find that the project design, as it's been modified, and we can flip through some of the slides to show the updated revisions, does reflect the direction of the Commission. And so with that, staff finds that all identified concerns have been sufficiently addressed, and staff recommends that the Commission find the project exempt from CEQA under Section 15303, and approve the design review as conditioned.
Thank you.
Available for any questions, and the applicant is here as well.
Any questions for staff? Would the applicant like to speak?
I don't think so, not this time. Unless you've got something to say to me. I think I do have a moment.
So this slide shows the rendering, the color rendering of the original design, and then directly adjacent to it is the rendering of the 180 degrees flip of the direction, directed redesign by the Commission.
So, and then applicant just, I basically did what was suggested, and which I liked also, so, and after talking to the neighbors, I think everybody should be okay. Find out, right? Thank you.
I'll now open public comment. Does anyone have any comment? Close public comment. John, would you like to open the discussion?
I don't have anything to say on this one, Grace. I mean, we discussed it a lot last meeting. I think the solution works. We don't have a lot of unhappy neighbors here, so I think this one's ready to go.
David?
I concur.
Lester?
I agree.
Yeah, I thought it was a really stellar example of a positive way to deal, to do some problem-solving and conflict resolution, and I'm really happy with it. I think it was wonderful. It's very inspiring.
And I agree. I think you've done a real good job. I thank you for taking into consideration the neighbors' concerns. May I have a roll call? Or may I have a?
Well, we haven't had a motion yet.
I move we accept the resolution as written, and move this project forward.
A second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Pont?
Yes.
Monette?
Yes.
Knutson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hardy?
Yes.
Chair Kistner?
Yes. Thank you, sir. The next one is 5.3, and it's requested by Donna and Ray Hines for a second and final one-year extension on the demolition permit and design review approval they received on August 18th, 2015, for the construction of a new single-family home, second unit and accessory structures on the property located at 1057 Pratt Avenue in the medium residential density district.
Thank you, Chair. As you mentioned, this is an extension, the second extension, for a approved design review, for demolition and design review for an existing property at 1057 Pratt Avenue. There's been no changes to the design that was approved by the Commission. However, our design reviews are limited to one year in life, and then applicants are required to come back and file a extension application, and you are allowed to have two extensions. So this is the second and final extension application that this project has available to it. The applicant is here, and I believe may have a presentation for the Commission. She has indicated that some of her timing issues she finds are a result of actions by the city, and therefore this should not be the final extension granted. Staff was not aware to find, or able to find any ability of the Commission to grant anything other than the extension. We don't, there was no code section that allowed the Commission to say this is not the final one. That staff was able to research in a very short amount of time. However, we can work with the applicant if they'd like us to do some additional research at the direction of the Commission.
Thank you. Does anyone have any question for staff? Would the applicant like to speak?
So, Donna Hines, thank you all for serving on the Planning Commission. I know it's a big job, and appreciate what you do for the city. So our design review, as Noah said, was issued two years ago with the condition that a certificate of occupancy would not be issued unless, until the La Salkobas completed the upgrade of the Cronella Lift Station. So this was a condition, you know, placed on us by the city that we had no control over. The condition was actually not fulfilled until March of 2017. So it would not have been practical in any way for us to have started construction with no idea of when this, we would get a certificate of occupancy. You wouldn't want to build a house and then, you know, have it just sitting there. So, you know, we delayed construction for that reason. And since this was a condition placed on us by the city and not, you know, something that was in our control, we are asking that this extension tonight not be the final extension, but that we be allowed one additional year after this extension that we're granted tonight. That's it.
Is there any public comment? Close public comment. Lester, would you like to open the discussion?
Sure. Happy to.
I knew you would.
Well, I'm, I don't want to get too far ahead of staff's work on this question, but it does seem to me that with respect to the question of how the condition relating to the La Salkobas project affected the ability of the Hineses to usefully commence construction on their project, and how that relates to the city's authority and the Commission's authority to extend the design review approval, I can only offer a suggestion to the applicant, which would be to formally request an administrative determination on the subject, which could then be appealed to the City Council. I don't think that's a question that is within the Commission's competence, and we're always at a disadvantage here when we sit without County Council, or, excuse me, the City Attorney present. But it does seem to me that it's an important point that the applicant raises, and that there is, one way or another, a process through which it can be addressed, though it may not be here this evening.
Did you call that formally request?
Oh, an administrative determination. That's what I would be doing if I were in their shoes. I'd ask for a written determination as to tolling of time for the time it took for that La Salkobas matter to, you know, be finalized. And then, you know, you either get the determination you want, in which case you're done, or you don't, and then there's a process for appealing it.
I have a question for Ms. Hines as well. I see here on page 203 that you've secured a utility easement along the right-of-way easement to the property for the sewage, sewer connect, the sewer connector. And then you also have an oral agreement with the 1832 Cronella property. It says here to grant a sewer easement in the event this access is more feasible. Has there been any progress with the determination of which is the more direct route?
I have not proceeded with getting an easement from that party yet. They do not want to grant that until the project's ready to be built.
But it sounds like regardless of which direction you go, the sewer connection is a fait accompli. Is that correct? That you will connect to a city sewer?
Oh, yes, I have to. That's also a condition.
Yeah. Okay. That was my question.
Okay.
John?
Is it actually a condition in the permit that says they cannot connect until the lift station is completed?
No, the permit states that they would not be granted occupancy until those completions were made, and staff did have a brief discussion with Ms. Hines towards, I think, when you were filing your first extension, about construction versus occupancy versus sewer improvements and those things.
Do we have any written material from the previous Public Works Director on this particular point?
The email that's attached includes some correspondence with Steve Palmer, where he did indicate that I could not get a certificate of occupancy until that Cronella Lift Station had been completed. I checked on this periodically during the process, so that's attached. And then I, you know, had some communications with Erica after she took over.
Does that have something to add, Erica?
No, I had forgotten about the correspondence until she provided it this evening, and Noah informed me this morning this may come up.
Is that the correspondence we got a copy of? It was in our mailbox?
It's on the dais right now.
Okay.
Can we approve the extension without making a determination of whether this is the final, unquote, or quote-unquote "final" or not?
Absolutely.
I mean, it seems like that's the, that would be smart.
Well, then I think we should vote on, on what is, what is your direction in the packet this evening? That you worked with Ms. Hines to resolve the differences?
Yeah, my sense is I don't think it's, it was an unreasonable thing for the applicant to put off doing the construction until, you know, a certificate of occupancy could be in, you know, could be reasonably available when the project was done. That doesn't seem unreasonable to me. And I also appreciate that she chose to request, make the request rather than apologize. And I would, since there has been actually one suggestion offered today, I would, I would like the staff to work on what Commissioner Harding discussed. That sounds like a good, if the applicant is interested, that sounds like it might be a good compromise, so that, because I, you know, I really am sympathetic with the desire for this not to be the last request for extension, given the circumstances, so. I would, I don't know if we, if that's the kind of direction you're asking for, to pursue that particular, or to pursue something, some further, as you suggested, some further efforts to be able to, to meet her, to do what the applicant is asking, and to make this not the last extension. That's my feeling.
If I could, excuse me, John, I'd just like to complete my thoughts about this. I believe I understand why the condition was there in the first place. I mean, that was a question of capacity within the city's sewer mains, and I recollect dealing with some of the concerns about the need for a new lifting station some years back. So I know that was very much a priority for our Public Works Directors, and the challenge was always figuring out how to fund it, and apparently La Salkobas became the key. So I understand why the condition was there. At the same time, I don't think it makes any sense at all for a property owner to construct a dwelling before they know that it qualifies for final occupancy, well, without knowing that even if it's constructed according to all other conditions and codes, it may not qualify for final occupancy. The delay in construction is absolutely reasonable. So I think we should move forward with what's in front of us, but I wanted to put my comments on the record. Thank you.
I would agree with you, Lester, that apparently we have limited options on this one. It's either approve or disapprove, and, you know, I'm inclined to approve it, but we can't a-capella without action of a body above us, say, oops, we'll give you another year. That's not within our power or purview. I would also suggest that the matter isn't quite ripe for that anyway. Assuming approval tonight, you have another year. It's been for sale for almost a year. It may well sell. And in the meantime, I don't know how you go to the City Council and say, gee, I need relief on this, when the necessity of the relief is still a year away.
I do. It's just as I proposed.
Yeah, but you're asking a question.
Yep.
But especially if she's wanting to sell it. It means a lot to only have a year with no, that goes with the property, I assume? The extension goes with it?
Yeah, but once they, once they, once they start construction.
Yeah, but I.
You have more time than that. You pulled the permit, you're moving away, and the speed on construction of the project is greatly under control of the contractor and the owners of the parcel, as long as they're making reasonable progress on the construction. You don't have to finish it right away. No requirement to do so.
It just seems like it's not too difficult a thing to assure that there would be a second year in case there are unforeseen problems, if there, if it isn't that, you know, if you were willing, it sounded to me like you were willing to investigate more if that was the direction that you got from the Commission. Is that accurate?
Well, I think the only thing we can vote on tonight is what the recommendation is, and I would suggest that the applicant pursues what Commissioner Harding has suggested in the future.
But we can't make that as a condition, I mean, as an addition to our.
No.
Our motion tonight.
No, it's not in our purview.
Okay. Our purview? Yeah.
Agree?
I agree.
But the.
Do I hear a motion, please?
I move to grant the additional year extension. As per the.
I'll second that.
As per the matter in front of us.
I don't think we could do that.
What?
Was the motion for the, to approve the project as recommended?
Are you saying what's in the packet tonight?
Yes, what's in the packet. As per the packet.
I thought, I thought.
No, as per the packet.
Thank you.
The additional year approval.
Do I have a second on that?
You've got it.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Knutson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hardy?
Yes.
Commissioner Pont?
Yes.
Monette?
No.
Kistner?
Yes. All right, the next one is a request by Tom Traynor on behalf of William and Lydia Attunney for adoption of a resolution approving a demolition permit retroactive and design review in order to accommodate a partial demolition reconstruction in addition to this historic home located at 1508 Spring Street in the medium resident, density residential district.
Thank you, Chair.
As mentioned, the item before you is a request for demolition and design review. The demolition application is retroactive to accommodate a partial demolition reconstruction in addition to the historic home located at 1508 Spring Street. April 26, the City Council approved a variance for elimination of a covered parking space and design review for the restoration in addition to the historic home located at 1508 Spring. On March 9th of this year, April 26 was in 2016, prior to the issuance of a building permit, demolition of significant portions of the home's exterior was conducted without the benefit of a building permit. The property was red-tagged, and the applicant was directed to apply for a new design review because the project was no longer a restoration, it was now a different project than was approved by the Planning Commission, and certain conditions of that approval could not be met because materials had been demolished. In addition, the applicant was directed to file for a demolition project, or demolition application, given the extent of the demolition that had occurred on the property. As noted in the staff report, the previously approved variance was not affected by the unpermitted demolition, and at the time the direction was provided to the applicant, that was not seen as a challenge or an issue. However, because the building permit was not issued, the variance was not vested, and it was identified today that that application has expired. So the mechanism allowing no covered parking for the project can no longer, is not before the Commission, and so based on that, it's recommended that the Planning Commission hold a public hearing, because the item's been noticed, but continue the item to a date certain to allow the applicant to file their variance application and allow the full package to be brought back before the Commission. I apologize for this late notice. It was just discovered in the lead-up to the meeting today. The applicant's been informed, their representative and a neighbor, maybe several neighbors are here to speak, so it is recommended that the Commission hold the public hearing, and then can continue the item to allow them to provide the variance mechanism. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Would you tell me what the variance is for?
For the no covered parking. So you'll recall, the project was originally proposed as a design review to restore the front, the historic portion of the home, and then construct an addition. However, because the existing parcel does not have covered parking, and the, so it's an existing non-conforming situation, the applicant was proposing an addition of more than 50%, so it was an expansion of the non-conformity of the parcel, of the property, because it didn't have a covered parking space. So they were required to obtain a variance approval to preclude the covered parking. Again, in all the discussions with this applicant, this was never an issue because they had that approval, and their demolition of the historic fabric of the home didn't influence the variance. However, their timeline in order to get their project back before the Commission resulted in the demolition, or the variance application expiring, and they never filed for an extension.
All right, does anyone have any questions?
I have a comment. Mr. Hardy, should you be here at this moment in time?
No. I was just waiting for an opportunity to recuse myself. I live within 10 feet of the subject property, so I'm out of here. Bye. Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Knutson.
I have a staff question, actually. So I guess the facts on the ground are that they're essentially, it's a historic structure or was a historic structure, and so the idea was at least the first part of the house was to continue to have that historic nature, correct? So, sort of despite the continuance, my curiosity is that the plans submitted for the front of the house are actually different than the original plans. They've treated the porch in a different manner, which to me, there's a different roofing line, and it strikes me that it sort of takes away some of the historic aspects of that house. What I'm looking at is page 37, and then compare that to page 67. So on page 67 was the original front elevation, with the two windows, the door, the window on the right, and a constant slope for all of the roof lines. On page 37 is the current plans, and the roof line for the porch is now an additional different angle than the other roof lines, and it looks to me like the porch is bumped out a little bit. So it strikes me as sort of a different, I mean, given that we're still trying to aim at the historic preservation somehow, it looks like a different, pretty different approach to the, to the front of the house.
So I note that change. I had not been applicant, or the planner, assigned to this project, so I'm kind of filling in.
Yeah.
I don't know if the applicant would like to speak to the proposed changes in the design here.
Or it could be part of the continuance, if that's where we're go, but it's a, it's a question that immediately came up to me, given the historic nature of what we're looking at.
And I will identify that the previous approval did, did allow some minor modifications to the porch. However, I have not looked at that or discussed that with the applicant.
John?
Do you notice, is it a different architect?
No.
Do you want me to address that issue right now, or do you want to?
Yes, would you, please?
Hi, I'm Tom Traynor, and so if you want me to just address the change in the covered porch, my recollection was that it was always being changed on the drawings, and it was done by the, per the client's requirements, that that's the way they wanted it done. And I think it never raised an issue during the plan check process. It was never, it was never brought up that this is a change from the historic nature of the house. And, you know, this is the, actually the first time that that issue has been broached. So it may be that we need to go back and redesign the front porch to comply with the historic look at the porch.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is there, there is an extra story on this plan that wasn't there last? Is that correct?
No.
There's not? So there was a second story and the last? So there's no change in the.
That's correct.
Story? Okay.
Chair Kistner, should we continue this as per? Chair Kissner, should we continue this as per Planning Director House's recommendation, given the fact that the expiration of the variance for covered parking is not part of the packet tonight? And perhaps during this time, there could also be the sort of assessment of the porch and any other perhaps small changes that-
Except I think we ought to listen to the whole thing before we make that decision.
Okay.
I agree.
I'm wondering, we'll have to have a public hearing for the variance anyway.
That's correct.
Right? So, if we continue this public hearing until the hearing on the public, until the variance is ready, there'll be one public hearing, one time, they won't have to pay for a second one.
Another option would be to hold the public hearing today and leave it open rather than closing it, but continue the item. So, but that is a valid point.
Either way, no, I just don't see the necessity of doubling up on the payments.
Exactly.
What would the applicant like? I mean, that's what might be important to find out here.
Yeah, I believe, I believe the applicants do have a presentation.
You okay with doing half the public hearing?
Hi, I'm Bill Turney. The fact that the variance had expired was news to me. We didn't know there was an expiration date on it, or we would have filed, of course. As far as rehearing, we would like to have everything done at one time. And it seems like if you have questions that we could clear up, maybe some of the minor questions now, that would be a help so that when we went into the major, the second hearing, there wouldn't be a lot of discussion on, take your time on doing that again. But we'll do it whatever way you guys decide to do it. I do have a few comments to make in addition to this specific technicality.
I guess, Noah, I'd like to ask you what the most efficient way to do this is.
I feel holding the public hearing for the folks who are here to comment on the project is important. And then, not closing the public hearing but continuing to a date certain, I've spoken with the applicant, they said they're willing and able to file the variance application tomorrow and staff will be able to include that in the packet and be able to respond to a date certain in two weeks from today. There's not a lot of additional information regarding the variance that hasn't already been analyzed. It would just be regards to the extent of the minor changes that the applicants have made from their previous design.
All right, so you're telling me, other than the variance, all we're going to do is a design review?
Design review, demolition and a variance application will be acted on for this project.
That's the extent of it.
Correct, correct.
I just want, I just want to be absolutely correct that that's all we were doing.
That is correct, yes.
Thank you. Is that agreeable to everyone?
Fine.
Is that agreeable to you all?
Yes.
All right, then, Noah, do we need a vote?
No, just be to have the applicants make their presentation, hold the public hearing.
All right, would you like to make your presentation, sir?
But what about, there's a couple of people that have come to speak.
You can make your presentation and then I'll open up to public comments.
Oh, I see, okay. This has been somewhat of a confusing project for us. We're not in the business of buying and building a house. My company builds houses, but that's, I don't go to, I've never been to this process. My wife has been to the neighbor's house many times over the years and she always had her eye on this house. And when it came up for sale, she wanted to buy it because she wanted to preserve it exactly how it used to be. She wanted the historic nature of this house to be just like it was. She went out and spent a lot of time trying to find a window person that would duplicate the exact, the windows that they had in it. These are single-pane, you know, 100-year-old type windows and couldn't find it. But she had a lot of discussions with Juliana Inman, who is the historic architect, and they worked together pretty closely on this. And Juliana Inman was, I believe, quite pleased at how my wife wanted to preserve everything she could. We've been here for 35 years and we have enjoyed it here, but my wife said, you know, we can't live forever and when one of us goes, the other one's going to have to live in town. We live just north of town. So, what we need to do is build a house so we can, you know, we can walk to town and, you know, we're going to put an elevator in it and it's going to be a sort of a senior place. So, I remember Commissioner Manette was very happy to hear that because we do need places, no offense on your age or anything, but we do need places for citizens. Anyway, she was desperately trying to get this approved. We didn't know about the siding issue. Really, that's, the whole thing would have been well underway now, except the siding was taken off. We thought, well, let's just put identical siding back on. It'll look just like it was when it was new. That would be an improvement. We're happy to do whatever we have to do to get the project through. So, we don't have any, you know, any control over it. It's just a question of, you know, it'll be three years in January since we own the property. And we've been living with this every day. You know, we talk about it all the time and it's, we would appreciate whatever help the commission could provide in the way of light and peace and serenity onto this project. Just one brief comment on the back, on this parking thing. The lot's only 36 feet wide and if you put a parking garage in the back, that's the end of the backyard. And her dream was to have a pool with landscaping around it. There's a little house in the back for rentals and stuff. And a garage would, you know, wouldn't work. Plus, you can't get in and out, really. I mean, it would be a very, very long backup and she's, well, she's over 70, but she is, she just doesn't think she could do that.
Watch it.
I know. So, anyway, we're just flabbergasted. We just are, we've tried to do everything we can and except for this blunder with the, that Tom Traynor will mention, we thought we did. And so, I guess, I just want you to have a look at us and know that we're, we think we're good people and we're not in this to make any money. In fact, the way it's going now, I'm just questioning how much we're going to lose, but that's only a joke. Maybe it won't be that way. So, with that, could I turn it over to, or that's my, do you have any questions for me? That would be good.
Anyone have any questions to the applicant?
Yeah, oh, go ahead. You mentioned the little house in the back for rentals and such, is that what you said?
Yeah.
So, what kind of rentals are you thinking of? I hadn't heard this.
Long-term.
Pardon?
It would be, it would be, you know, there was a lady that worked in Pennyweight that we ran into that was, we even let her have a little place at our house. She was a worker here, she couldn't find a place to rent. And, you know, so that's kind of who we thought would be renting it until at such point that we got too old and then there might be a caregiver living in it. So, that would be the way that went.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, sir. An open public comment or is there any public comment? Would you like us to take the podium, please? Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Patricia Hanley and I own the house next door to the Turney project. And Bill sounds very patient, but I have lost my patience on this project. And it's not just this project. I bought my house in 2004 and the gentleman that lived there in that family home passed away suddenly in 2010 on the Turney house. His brother moved in and he proceeded to rip up the front yard, killed all the plants, papered over the windows from the inside, terrorized me on a weekly basis. I was down in the city hall at the police station, et cetera, you know, with my complaints. I had to live with that. In 2012, they, he sold the house to a couple from Sonoma and it sat there for several years, vacant and decrepit. And then the Turneys bought it in 2014 and I was delighted. I know them for years. I knew how much Linda liked the house, you know, I knew that she had great taste. They had the funds to accomplish a project like this. Because I've been sitting there for seven years with my property value really diminished. I mean, poor Noah, I went down and cried and, you know, in the front of the office one day because I, I just, I can't take it. I mean, I'm thinking seven years in this city of St. Helena. I pay my taxes, I spend money to keep my property well-maintained. It's a lovely little home, but if I had to sell my property, that would so impact what I would get for that property. It makes me sick. I mean, I just broke my arm a few months ago and it made me really think about that. You know, that's my, that's my savings. I'm self-employed. I don't want to start crying here, but I might. I, I just, whatever you can do to facilitate, you know, this family that wants to enhance the neighborhood, stop. God, I feel like I'm on one of those game shows. So, that's my plea. Please take into consideration that this neighborhood, you know, it's just an eyesore and it's a mess and I'm the one that lives next door to it. I'm the one that looks at it every single day and that, you know, like I said, the value of my property, it's in the tank. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Tom McBroom. I live at 1556 Spring at the corner of Stockton, about four houses down from the subject property. Some background on Diane and me, we bought that house in 2008. Our last three homes have been built before 2000, or excuse me, 1920, including this one. And so, we're big on historical preservation. Everything that we do in our homes is made to go with the character of the house and honor the designers and owners that went before us. I've also spent most of my time in the construction business in my career and I'm a big believer in permitted work, not jumping the gun on permits, getting proper approvals. But this project has gone on quite far enough. It's been, this home has been a derelict property, even when Bill lived there. So, this is back to 2008, it's been an eyesore. People have made attempts to improve it and fallen short and it is really a shame that that kind of property exists in St. Helena, which has such a beautiful selection of older and historical homes. I would, my, I understand the issue about permits expiring. I mean, I get it, but this is really becoming very bureaucratic to the, to those of us who are in the business, have lived in town a long time. It's like, come on, you know, you guys are hung up on technicalities. You need to move this project along. You have a willing developer who's willing to take this property and do something great with it. It's unfortunate if the siding came off, but you know what? It's done. The siding came off, it's gone, it can't be replaced. Let's just get over it. Modify the permits and get whatever approvals we need to do, but I think Noah moving this along tonight, I think getting, getting a part of the hearing done is one of the things you can do to move it along. I just think, you know, it's been forever. In terms of the covered parking, my opinion on that is some properties lend themselves to it and some don't. In fact, a lot of the properties around us have required covered parking to go in as part of the permits and those covered parking spaces never get used for covered parking. They're impractical, they wind up being storage sheds. And so, if the city thinks it's doing something wonderful by requiring covered parking to get cars off the street, it's not working, folks, you know? And I think in this case, the home did not have covered parking before. I think that it should proceed without it today. Thank you.
Is there any further public comment?
I'm actually the applicant, so I don't know if that qualifies as a public comment portion, but-
You have, you have the opportunity to rebut or agree with anyone that said?
I, yeah. What my, what I would like to do today is provide a little history into how we got into this mess, which we are in. And I want to take full responsibility for creating this mess. I'm not going to blame anyone but myself because of all the individuals who had a part in removing the siding, I was the only one who really knew that that siding was to be maintained and restored. There was nothing on the, on the construction documents that indicated that whatsoever. And I neglected to notice that that was not on there and I neglected to inform my superintendent that the siding was to be restored. I just kind of assumed he understood that and I assumed that the drawings indicated that, which they didn't. So, so I wanted to take, as I said, full responsibility for that misfortunate action that the siding was removed. You know, immediately after that occurred, I had a long discussion with Noah about what we could possibly do and he came to the conclusion that there really, we really needed to go through the design review process again. I contacted Juliana Inman, the historic architect, explained the situation to her. She did some research and determined that you can replace historic elements in kind and we had samples of the siding, we had photographs of the molding and we had always intended to replace the windows with new windows because they were all falling apart, but to match the existing. And that's exactly what we still intend to do. We feel that once this building is restored, the general public and everyone except perhaps those in this room today, won't know that the siding on that building is new rather than old. It's going to be made from the same material, milled to the same dimensions, painted with everything except the lead paint that was on it. So, so with that, I wanted to first and foremost say, I apologize to the city, to the community, to Trish, her next-door neighbor, who has to put up with this for another seven or eight months of delay, and to my clients. So, I wanted, and I apologize that you- So I wanted, and I apologize that you guys have to hear this whole sad story again yourself. But, you know, our intent is to, if we, we do get approval to move forward, is to make this a home that will, we'll all be proud of, that will not jump out at you and say this is something that shouldn't belong here, that it looks like it is a part and parcel of the fabric of this city and of that historic district. So, and I think, I think that's probably all I needed to say about the history of this and my direct responsibility for us getting into this mess we are in tonight.
Can I ask the, can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
I'm just curious if there's anything that the city could have done or anyone could have done. Did you not know there wasn't a permit to, for a demolition permit?
Yeah, and I knew that too. We had, we, we were, during that period of time and there was a lot of changes in city governments in the, in different departments and permits were really difficult to, to getting issued. And this one, it was going on for, you know, not an exceptionally long time, but on January 26th, we got a message from Darrell Mays, who was the building, chief building inspector at the time, and he said that he had finished his review of the drawings and that the permit was ready to be issued. So we thought, well, great. So, but, you know, we had a rainy winter and it was, you know, not something to do. So we had, you know, been thinking that the permit was going to be imminent any single day now and it just never seemed to show up. We had a, our demolition contractor had another project to get to and, you know, we thought, well, maybe, you know, we, we're not going to be covering up anything, we just get rid of the, the back portion of the building which was going to come down, which was not in the historic nature, and clean up the yard. And that was the direction we gave him to do. Unfortunately, perhaps it was a language issue because he's Hispanic or what, but it got away from us. So, and, you know, we've been, as, as a company and personally, you know, I've got a black eye because of this situation starting sooner. Contractors board came after me and fined me for this. I've been having to pay for all the recent middles and repermits, so, you know, we're, we're suffering a bit because of this. But be that as it may, you know, it's something that, being a business, sometimes you, you get into situations like this and hopefully never again, but this time we are in a nasty situation and we just ask for everyone's understanding and open-mindedness in reviewing this process, project one more time and hopefully giving us the opportunity to move forward and complete this project.
Well, I, we're all human and I really appreciate your honesty and willingness to admit culpability. It's very refreshing in the world we live in and I admire you for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Noah, how soon could we bring this back?
If the commission would like to continue for a date certain of two weeks, we can bring it back in two weeks. Depending on discussions regarding the, how much of the, there's been some minor changes as was pointed out by Mr. Knutson. However, that's completely within the purview of the commission. This is a new design review application, so it'll just be something that the commission reviews and staff can provide a little bit of additional input on those minor changes in the staff report when we bring it back.
I have a question for Mr. Trainer, if I may. So Tom, and by the way, also, planning director Houche, I think that the, I think you've been incredibly reasonable in terms of sort of the process once the building was sadly red-tagged. It seems like this is a, I know it's a little slower than the owners would prefer, but it seems like it's the proper process to go through. So I appreciate the effort you've done and Tom, I appreciate your willingness to be a great community builder, whereas you're, you know, you live in the community and you're part of it and, and I love the, the fact that you're, you know, you care about this stuff. I'm just curious, I'm back to this weird porch issue, which I think is actually sort of germane because it's, you know, historic, right? And so I'm looking at the as-built floor plan on page 70 and I'm just suddenly noticed that you changed architects once you decided to resubmit plans. It was Ivan Lukic and now it's Ted Smith design?
Well, Ted Smith was, Ivan Lukic was involved very early on the project. You know, Ted Smith was a, an architect that I think Linda's son or son-in-law was familiar with. I didn't know him at all. He's from, I think he's from Folsom. And so, once the project was, received approval from the city council, Linda and Bill hired Ted Smith. So, and I, I think that from what I can see is that Ted didn't really read the conditions of approval and started, you know, if he did, he would have, he would have put notes all over the drawings, save this siding, do this, but there isn't, you know? So, so now, you know, when we went back to him, we made sure that he did do that. As far as the front porch, you know, I, I wasn't really a part of the discussions that Linda and Bill had with Ted as to why that was modified and, you know, I probably recognized it was modified. I don't know if I, if I looked closely enough to see if it was in, in.
So the modification, so this is what's interesting from a historical perspective. So the initial porch and the stairs to the porch, the porch end at the front line, end at the front wall of the house. In the revised plans that were, have now been submitted, instead the porch is bumped all the way to that wall and so therefore then the stairs themselves are protruding into the ground. So that, what that means is because of the, the original roof was just a short slope off of that, the taller roof line, that it didn't sort of disrupt the, but now that it's a longer porch, that meant that then you have another line coming in there. And I would really encourage the applicant and to go back to, I think the plans are pretty nice, but I'd really, in fact, I think it's, you know, I love the fact that the initial part of the building is maintained as it, as it was and then, and then sort of the modernization is disguised behind that. But I, I'd really love to see that porch go back to the way, way it was built, the original design, because that's.
And I think, you know, I want to reread the conditions of approval that were originally granted and if, if they have any mention of that, I want to go back and, and talk to my clients and to get their agreement that the porch ought to remain as it was originally designed.
Thank you, Tom.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Noah, do we need a, do we need a motion to bring this back?
A motion to continue to a date certain.
I, I would like to hear a motion to continue this on, at our meeting on the 19th.
So moved.
I'd like to make a motion to continue this subject until the meeting on the 19th, at which time we will also add the discussion, that hearing on the variance.
Well, that'll be part of it.
Yes. Want to make sure that's specifically included.
I think that he indicated we would have a design review in the variance.
Second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Which motion are you seconding?
John's motion.
John, pump.
I made the motion, he seconded it. Yes.
And then David.
Commissioner Pont.
Yes.
Knutson?
Yes.
Minette?
Oh, yes.
Chair Kistner?
Yes. Thank you all very much.
I will gather Commissioner Hardy to come back to the dais.
Hmm? Oh, yeah.
We need to have.
He's camped outside. I thought you said goodnight.
I thought he was leaving, yeah, but.
All right, our next item is scheduled matters and that is the prioritization of the planning commission and city council assigned projects.
Thank you, Chair. So, yeah, this item is on the new business agenda 6.1 and it's requested from, from staff, a prioritization of planning commission and city council assigned projects. The commission's well aware that staff provides a pending agenda item included with each commission packet and on that includes a list of projects that have been assigned by the commission and the council that staff will eventually be able to get to. So there was a list that was pending when I took over the role as a director and that, that list has been added to much more than we've been able to cross things off in that, in my ten, my short tenure here. So this has occurred over the past few years and includes a variety of options and issues. In the spring of 2017, staff worked with the planning commission to prioritize and update the tentative agenda to reflect the priorities set by the commission at that time. On July 11th of, of this year, the new commission was seated, but you, you, this commission had not had an opportunity to participate in the prioritization of that list. In addition, on August 22nd, we held a joint meeting with the city council and this commission and the council at that time voted to authorize staff to issue an EIR, an RFP for a new EIR for the general plan, as you all are well aware, due to the age and inadequacy of that document. And at that meeting, several additional, or two additional items, several additional items were added to the list by both the council and the planning commission. And so staff felt it was appropriate to bring that back before this body in order to allow input from this commission on that list. It's listed as an attachment. In addition, staff has provided the staff recommendation for that prioritization in the staff report with some additional input and summary information to help this decision. It's important to note that SEQA will play a role in some of these projects that are identified in the list and certain projects will be able to rely on previously adopted SEQA documents while other projects, depending on their scope, could trigger new SEQA. So that, that factored into some of the prioritization as recommended by staff with regards to how this list should be prioritized. So obviously the general plan, the EIR is first and foremost. Staff intends to have a RFP issued for that process to begin by the end of September. And so given that, staff finds that there's going to be some additional capacity for our department to move forward on some of these prioritized items. Given that the design guidelines were originally proposed in, I'm sorry, this is the existing priority list as identified by the previous commission. Given that the creation of design guidelines was essentially committed to with the adoption of the housing element in 2015, staff does find that, that it should be a top priority of the commission. In addition, six months ago, when staff was kind of planning out how these items could be tackled, we were intending to begin work on that about now. We've hired an intern, the council supported that. We put together a team to essentially begin moving forward with design guidelines and we're ready to do that should it be prioritized by the commission. Separately, obviously we've always anticipated needing to do is comprehensive zoning code update following adoption of the general plan because the general plan identifies a number of policies and changes. Separate from that though, as we've all experienced using this code, there are a number of issues that could be updated and addressed separate from the design, or I'm sorry, the general plan direction and staff has included within the comprehensive zoning code update, a number of items that, that would be looked at as a part of that update. That includes review of the floor area ratio, looking at the demolition permits, that process and essentially how we get there, potentially creating a temporary use permit process. There's some changes in state law that have not been updated, daycare regulations and telecommunications facility regulations are two of which that are, the code needs serious updating. Potentially a food truck ordinance that was on the list for staff when, when I was hired. And then additional direction from the commission and the council at our last meeting was to review kind of what uses are permitted and conditional uses in the service, commercial and central business zoning districts and then also look at how existing wineries propose changes in that process. And staff does feel that all of that could be wrapped into a comprehensive zoning code update that's primarily intended to clean up existing regulations, but could be used to make some minor changes to some of these processes and not trigger a significant SEQA review, which would then potentially lead to more resources. Staff does feel like the current staffing levels in the department could facilitate running with these tracks parallel, so essentially creating design guidelines and zoning code modifications while also managing the general plan update. And then theoretically, if those were completed and after, assuming the commission is supportive, we could move on to some of these other items. It's worth noting that some of these, I think the drought policy changes may be worth a visit to, maybe pushing it lower along the list, given that the drought has been lifted by the state. But again, staff is looking for input on these and this item is intended to provide a discussion for the commission to provide direction to staff to reprioritize this list and allow us to bring back work plans as to how we'll tackle some of these bigger projects. Those work plans will identify timelines, public engagement opportunities, all those things, essentially lay out the process for how these bigger projects will be tackled early so that way the public, the commission, everyone understands how staff intends to do that, how the outreach will be done, all those things. Getting back to the staff priority list, essentially we focus on top, number three, three of the four top priorities identified by the former commission, as I mentioned, general plan, EIR, design guidelines and zoning code. Code enforcement obviously is an ongoing issue. We are able to effectively implement code enforcement in the department. The process could be improved, but staff isn't seeing it as a, as a need per se, more than just the ongoing efforts to implement code enforcement are more of a need that staff feels than actually changing the process. And again, as I mentioned, SEQA is going to be a part of this and so the scope of some of these changes will dictate the SEQA process. Obviously there was direction from the commission to begin creation of a framework for a housing strategic plan. This is a massive item that would require a number of elements, study sessions, ad hoc committees, SEQA analysis, further council and commission input. And so we're happy to move forward with that, but that doesn't seem that something could be tackled in the short term and so we are requesting the commission vote and provide input on the priorities that staff can then begin to work with. Obviously, the commission or the council is going to have some input on that and so it is worth noting that the city manager does intend to be holding a, a meeting with the council tomorrow and that is anticipated to result in some goal setting and some prioritization on their part. And so today, staff is asking that essentially we work to prioritize the list, identify any fatal flaws that are in it, things that maybe are blatantly missing or maybe out of touch with the commission's direction. Staff would then polish that list, bring it back and again, begin work on it. So that, that concludes my presentation and I'm available for any questions.
Is that meeting tomorrow open to the public?
All meetings of the council are open to the public. I believe it was essentially requested that members of the public not show up because I think it's intended to kind of serve as some.
Oh, it's their, it's their bonding.
Exactly.
So it's not a meeting about, I see, so it's not appropriate to go there with these issues?
That's correct. But staff does anticipate that the result of that meeting will be direction to city management to set priorities, have a, direct a goal-setting mission, all of those things after they work out some of their bigger direction pictures regarding governance and those types of things. There is an agenda posted for that meeting.
So maybe showing up late would be less embarrassing than being there from the beginning? I mean, when are they gonna, do you know when they're gonna be doing?
I haven't been involved in that process and again, it's my understanding, it's similar to the. to the last meeting that was held with the facilitated team building opportunity that was occurred.
I think the boss wants to speak.
City Manager Presswitz is here.
Hopefully, I can help elaborate on that. So yes, Mark Presswitz, the city manager. Tomorrow, we have a governance meeting where we will do some team building followed by some discussions of how the organization wants to work together as a team. And we'll also talk about processes related to the governance of meetings in general, staff report length, presentations, PowerPoints, number of things like that. What will follow this will be a second public meeting where we will have the council establish goals and priorities moving forward. So that will be separately noticed. It will be a subsequent meeting probably in the next two to four weeks and we'll be checking calendars tomorrow to identify a date that works for everyone.
How would you like to deal with this, Noah?
I'm kind of, again, maybe we go down the list and see if there's anything that is jumping out as a missing item or something that seems out of touch. And then maybe if, once, if there's nothing missing or nothing too far out of touch, obviously, if there is, we'll add those changes and then maybe we can just have an open discussion about the prioritization. As I mentioned, I'll just be very frank, I was intending to have the general plan EIR done and adopted at this time. So I have put a lot of things into motion in order to begin work on design guidelines. The city has committed to doing those in 2015 and we've seen the result of not having those come back to affect us. So staff does see that as a priority. And the zoning code update, it's something we deal with every single day when I discuss meetings and items with applicants. And I mean, just the, you all are well aware of the kind of inconsistencies. So staff does see those two as top priorities and I do think we could actually legitimately get a significant amount of work done on those in the next, over through this fiscal year while we start to lay a foundation and a framework for the bigger housing strategy.
Grace, do you mind if I ask the city manager a question?
Of course not.
If you would, Mark, since you're going to be helping the council set priorities, I'm assuming some of them will come down this way or affect this list we have that we're considering tonight. Do you think some of those could change what we're working on tonight and ergo, maybe we should delay until we hear from the superior body?
Well, I think just in terms of general guidance, my advice will be less is more. My observation is this organization is challenged with finishing projects. We do a good job of starting projects. We do a good job of identifying items on a list. What's challenging is we're a very small organization and we have a history of not really finishing projects that need to be finished and need focused attention. And so my hope is that the council will, when they get to the goal-setting workshop, really focus on the top projects that we really want to finish before we move down the list. In terms of your list, the council saw your list, so I think there was a comfort level with what's there. So from the list itself, I think it is ambitious. There are a number of items, obviously, some of them are quite engaging. My advice would be to limit the high priority limit, the high priority items to as few as possible, but certainly okay to keep your list intact as it is. And again, the council did see that list.
Okay. Thank you.
So if we were to add to that list tonight, would the council see it, see our additions? Sorry?
You know, Bobby, I see four or five years' worth of work here.
I understand, but I see, I see a place for a couple of things and I'm just wondering, any modifications that we would do tonight? Would that be, would that affect tomorrow?
No, no. Tomorrow's, tomorrow is, again, it's a governance meeting where we'll talk about business practices at the, at the goal-setting workshop. That workshop, what we're also going to do is inventory all, and the staff is working with the city manager now on inventorying everything that's on everyone's plate along with other needs of the organization, along with everything that's in motion, including your list. So whatever you develop tonight, yes, we will share that with the city council and ultimately attempt to narrow the focus on goals that we think are achievable and identify an objective timeline that is measurable that we can hopefully deliver within.
Okay, thank you.
By the way, here, here, great, that your focus is the list for this member of the commission, that seems great to minimize the things that we're, that the city's focused on so that we can actually get outcomes. I think that'd be great.
I would like to request that after they have their goal setting, that we have another joint meeting. I don't think that we really had a fair meeting before, 15 minutes doesn't quite cut it. I spent a great deal of time putting together not only the list and adding to the list, but some ways I think that we can get things done. Noah has a copy of that. I, he, I don't know if he wants to pass it out to everybody or not, that's up to him. Or you can send it out to him, being as I sent it to you. I don't think I want to sit here and read the whole thing tonight, but I did come up with like, something we could do with like the, the housing element. I think that we need to get into the housing element. We haven't done that. I think it's very important that we establish a policy even right now, if we don't have the money to do it, I think we need to establish a policy. I think there's a lot of people in this town that have the expertise to do that without going out with a consultant and not taking a lot of staff time. I think we can utilize some of these people that have had the experience doing some of that. There's a lot of things that I see that we can do that staff really doesn't have to do all by themselves. And I've put together what I see here in this piece of paper.
Would it be important, useful for you to put it up on the screen or read it to us?
I don't know. Can you put it up?
Can you make copies?
I don't read so well, so, you know.
Or maybe we just, is it possible just to, to see it next in two weeks?
Yeah, if you want to send us a copy.
Okay, great.
Well, I have a question I'd like to address to Noah, just as a preliminary matter and make sure I understand how this priority setting actually works unless, I've gotten confused somewhere along the way, as a practical matter, all we have the authority to do in this regard as a commission is to make recommendations to the council. I'm unaware that we have the authority to direct staff to embark on projects absent council approval.
This is great, obviously. I mean, I take direction from the city manager who takes direction from the council. That's absolutely right. But again, most of the things that are on this list are things that have been identified by the commission and the city council for numerous years and just have not had any traction. So I think folks will agree that these are all priorities and they've all been supported at one time or another. And so just setting how staff can begin to work on them, making a recommendation from the commission that then gets brought to the council for formal direction to say yes. But again, this, this is the second time, well, this is actually now the third time we've discussed just this list in the last three months and have not been able to make any progress on it. So if we can get a concrete prioritization, then we can begin to move forward on it.
Understood, and, but I just think it's useful to understand and incorporate into our thinking about what we're doing that, that what's essential is that we get something in front of the councils that we get or that staff gets a clear and direct response to. That's what it takes to actually launch in an official way, action on, on the recommended priorities. And the other thing, it's already come up, but I think it's important to keep in mind as we move through our discussion is that there are enough high priority items on this list that simply identifying and allocating the resources to get them done is part of the challenge. And that, that for certain, the commission is entirely in the role of making suggestions where it can as opposed to making decisions. But if we have that in mind as we organize our recommendation on priorities, I think we'll, we're more likely to get the kind of response from the city council that we want.
And I agree 100%.
And I agree also 100% with Grace's idea that we have a real joint meeting with city council at some point to discuss these things.
I think as soon as possible after they're finished with their goal setting.
Well, I would suggest then let's go down one through 10 and see what we've got. And my first cut on this, if I can be so bold, is there's multiple years' worth of work here. I figure 10, 12-person years. We don't have the staff for that, at least to bite off in one chunk. So the other interesting thing is, most of the time is in the top half of your two slides, except for numbers nine and 10. I realize that lots of people want numbers nine and 10, but I might suggest that, given the time and the importance of the general plan and the zoning code, that nine and 10 stay nine and 10.
What are nine and 10?
Housing Strategic Plan and the Workforce Housing Study, which I think you can combine into one item. Which I also might suggest that you could combine into one item as part of our housing element update. You know, that's out, what, we just had ours approved a year ago?
Yeah.
So in another year and a half or so, maybe two years, it'll be time to warm that thing up for another rewrite.
Isn't it eight years, Noah?
Every four or eight years and ours is approved for eight.
Yeah, okay. So we may be out four years, but I bet by the time we get down to it, we'll be lucky if we finish the rest of the stuff. Real lucky.
You know, that's one of the things that I've, that I've spent a lot of time on and I think that we've got a lot of people in town that certainly could form an ad hoc committee that could bring the ideas and the way, at least write a strategic plan even if we're not able to, to put it into effect right now. And I really think that we need to do that. I think we've been promising that for, since the 1977 plan, if you want to go back and look at it. So I think it's time that we get to that and I think that we've got some, we've certainly got the, our town people, we've got people around the last housing committee. I think that we need to do an ad hoc committee just like we did with the water and get started with that and do some, some town hall meetings with the, with the population in town. And I think that that can be done with a lot, a great deal of staff time being used.
I don't know what you throw out then, Grace.
Huh?
I don't know what you pitch out.
Oh, I'm not, I'm saying...
I mean, we have to, we have to do the general plan.
I'm saying...
We have to do the zoning code update.
I think you can do...
You know?
Well, the, the housing element is, is approved. So we've got something that's already been approved that we can work with. I think that Noah is correct with, with the first two of his things, but I think that we can do the other congruently with these things so that we're accomplishing more than, than just staff time by utilizing the people in this town that are able to provide us with the information that's needed and not worry about going out and getting a consultant that somebody's got to spend a lot of time working with.
You're, you're looking at this, let's call it a concerted strategic plan for housing.
Yes.
Okay. You're looking at this differently than I am because I'm thinking that this kind of work will drive changes in the housing element.
It might, yes, and it might, it might then, and it might be a precursor to writing the new housing element.
Yeah, I don't see, I don't see this plan as necessarily being congruent with the existing housing element. So...
Well, that's, that's the lovely thing I thought about the water ad hoc committee is it, first of all, engaged a lot of community members into the process and secondly, it helped to drive ultimate decisions which are different from the decisions that were originally going to be made. And so what's lovely about, given that we have a very talented town with a lot of smart people in it who actually know a lot of this stuff. And the great thing about an ad hoc committee is you don't have to take the recommendations, you can simply start to surface issues. And so I'm supportive and perhaps in a joint planning commission council meeting, we can, we could discuss this a little bit further.
I just seeing it, particularly if you do an ad hoc committee, as eating up huge amount of staff time. I think that the water and sewer ad hoc committee ate up time for the public works director, ate up time for the finance director like crazy, such that they were spending most of their time on it.
But it was, we got to a better outcome, I think everyone would agree.
Oh, I don't agree. I think the committee did, did good work and came to a good outcome. I'm just thinking about how much staff time it's going to chew up, particularly if we're also trying to complete the general plan, EIR, probably diddle some more with the writing in the general plan because right now it's been through lots of hands. I don't think the council's seen it in three years. So at some point, they're going to have to go back and reread the document, that's going to be necessary.
They're going to have to reread it first.
You know, do the zoning code, look at design guidelines that will help drive the zoning code. That's a lot of work and those are things we absolutely positively drop dead need to do because your zoning code has to be, at least in this town, congruent with the general plan. We're not a, we're not a, we're a general law city. If you were a charter city, you could ignore that, but we're not a charter city. So it's got to be congruent and we can't say, oh, we'll be congruent in four or five years.
Well, John, I would like to take it to the joint session and let the city council decide. Like I said, I've spent a lot of time going over all this stuff. I know that there was staff time used in the ad hoc committee for the water rates. I attended all the meetings, I saw all of it. But I think that it's, I think it's something that we've been trying to do for years. I think that we need to do it. I think we need to do it because I think we need to find housing for people that work in this town. And I think that if we don't, that we're going to end up with a bunch of second homes without any workforce, without coming up and down that highway. And I think it's very important that we get started on it.
I certainly agree with that. And I spent 10 years on the editorial board talking about hollowing out the community. That's exactly what we talked about for a decade.
Anyway, I would like to take it to a joint session with the, with the council.
Is there a place speaking microphone? She can't hear you in the mic. They're on, but you're not speaking into the microphone.
Me or her?
I've looked at somebody else about that, you know.
So given that I can't commit to win that, joint meeting might occur, do you think the commission could discuss some prioritization of this list so we can actually have something for them to work on or look at at least as we start to discuss that?
Well, I certainly think, I certainly think that the first two items that you have on this list, you could start on the day before yesterday, if you, if you had the time a day before yesterday.
I also agree personally, as a commission member, that code enforcement is a, is a bugaboo for many, many folks in town and so that might be an interesting, an interesting piece to, you know, it's a quality of life issue clearly, but...
Noah, could we put some draft numbers on these things? Not so much in cost, but in time? I sort of scribbled some numbers down, you may want to scribble some numbers down. We're not going to try and hold anybody to them, but you know, best professional estimate, how long would it take to get this stuff done? You know, the, the general plan is unfortunately probably two years out. The zoning code is a year and a half, maybe two years?
So, no, so I think if, if we were to get a confirmation from the planning commission tonight that the general plan, EIR, the creation and implementation or initiation of creation of the design guidelines and the comprehensive zoning code update are the top three priorities, staff could, again, as I mentioned, begin working on, with a consultant on the EIR and begin design guidelines and zoning code updates in-house and have something created by the end of the fiscal year, which is July 1. Because I've essentially put in place the ability to begin that process, planning on doing it starting now without the general plan being part of that mix. That being said... That being said, it may not be as comprehensive as would have occurred with the general plan update, but it's something that we can begin to do to eliminate all the problematic code language, and essentially just clean up, again, tackling some of the issues that the commission have identified as priorities. Then, once the general plan is adopted, then we go back through and push the policies from the general plan that need to make policy changes in the zoning code. So, staff is anticipating working within the current policies we have, so that we have an FAR, we have some limitations on total square footage, and tweaking those to satisfy the direction of the commission in an informed way based on the experiences of the last few years of development and the way we're going. Similarly, with the design guidelines, but we've already committed to doing that, and we haven't even begun the process. And so, I'm ready to begin that process and have something back created with a lot of citizen input, full vetting with the community, town hall meetings, all that done July 1st, 2018. But I need clear direction to begin that process.
So, you're talking nine months to a first draft.
Let me offer some thoughts, see if we can move this a bit more forward. I have a question I want to start with, Noah. I know that the implementation or creation of design guidelines relates to an implement, at least in part, to implementing policy in the housing element. My question is this, are there any other unimplemented implementing policies in the housing element we should be concerned about?
I haven't done the research to answer that question. I imagine there are some.
I mean, some may be important and others not so much, so I'm really only concerned not to overlook or miss something that actually is potentially a stumbling block as we move forward.
And that's an excellent question. Nothing, to my knowledge, is directing the amount of policy creation work or land use regulation work, such as creating design guidelines. I think there's a number of policies in the housing element that direct looking at housing differently, directs some of the issues that the commission has been talking about, but nothing says create this whole new land use document that I'm aware of.
Thank you. And then, in terms of some substantive comments, if I go to the list on page 228, and I'll confess, let's see, is that, that's the same as the list we have on the screen. I agree with Noah that code enforcement policy and procedures update should be dropped lower on the list, I think, making, well, back up a second. It seems to me the city council's already decided that general plan, EIR, and update is a priority. I'm happy to concur in that to the extent that anyone really needs to hear it from the commission. The design guidelines and zoning code update, I'm also prepared to endorse right now as belonging at the top of the list. I do think it's important to be very clear about what we're talking about in terms of zoning code update. It seems to me, based on what Noah said, and the, you know, items 4A through 4G that are on the list, that we're talking both about what I would ordinarily call zoning ordinance cleanup.
That's correct.
And some actual updated policies, in some cases, food truck ordinance leaps to mind, things that are going to be brand new. So, there, I think we have a very different scenarios, potentially both with respect to staff time, and potentially questions about whether or not environmental review's required. The, you know, cleanup of ambiguous or contradictory language, all that sort of thing is important, often takes more time than anyone would like to think, but is otherwise pretty straightforward. Adjusting things that we already have, tweaking FAR or whatever of that like is on the list should be reasonably straightforward. You know, significant changes in the use permit process and demolition permit process...
Vice Chair Harding?
Yeah.
Can I make an interjection? I guess you already have.
Sure. Yes, you have.
I have.
I'm smiling still.
These things seem like sort of quick win type things that you're mentioning here, right?
Well, I'd be very cautious about how I estimate the time required, but, and it makes a big difference whether one is trying to do them as a package or trying to knock them off one at a time.
Yeah.
In terms of that quick win experience.
Like, for example, you could take the food truck, and it'd be sort of a separate quick win, right? Okay, let's solve that problem. You could take the...
I would think so.
You'd think so, right? You could take the demolition permit review, pull it out, you know? Well, you'd think.
Not, I've been, I've been bucked off too many horses for that. But, you know, maybe those are just the rodeos I went to.
But that is somewhat of the approach that staff is recommending, in that we have this list that's been living for years, and we have some capacity to move through these issues. Again, maybe not as comprehensively as the draft general plan directs, but to get a good foundation that then, once the general plan's adopted, we can really make those changes. That's the intent.
So, where I was really going with all that is, as a sort of general matter, I endorse putting this up at the top of the priority list, but in order to make it effective in terms of staff time and the process by which we actually get it done, I think it's really essential for Noah to think carefully about where, where the potential controversies are, where the potential need for environmental review is, and whether or not, as a practical matter, it's better to do it as a package, or as I think Commissioner Knudsen has suggested, in some cases, as separate items. I would really like some feedback at our next discussion on that.
I think that's something he needs to bring back to us, Lester.
That's what I was saying.
Yeah.
That's exactly right.
I think absolutely he needs to bring some of that back to us.
And if we have those items, just those first three at the top of the list, we've probably identified everything that we could realistically expect to accomplish on this list within the next year. I don't, and maybe, well, whether it takes a year, more or less, just to be very candid with everyone, if I think I've got a good idea what our biggest priorities are for the next year, I'm not worried too much about what's on the rest of the list or in what order. Because we're going to be busy for a good while until we even get to a point where we're going to begin to work on those things, and by the time we get to that point, circumstances will have changed, and we will need and want to revisit those items and recalibrate the priorities and have another discussion just like this one. So, I really think the most important thing is for us to make a firm and clear recommendation as to what the most important priorities are at the top of the list, and then to be sure that the rest of the list includes everything we think needs to remain somewhere up on the screen, not to be forgotten, but without agonizing too much over in what order. That, I'm done.
Good night, Lester.
I'm not going to sleep, I'm just going to shut up.
So, if I can try to encapsulate what you're saying, you're saying 1, 3, 4, more or less in that order. The rest of them, group two, in a group two, if you will, to be considered as they warm up, kind of thing. Or we have time.
We have time.
That is what I am suggesting, is an effective way to approach it.
The only, the only thing I'd suggest on that is that nine and 10 get combined, get put to the top of the number two list, and...
Which, what are nine and 10?
Nine and 10, essentially the housing plan.
Okay.
I mean, you've got the housing strategic plan and the workforce housing study. To me, those are one thing.
Oh, I agree, I agree.
It's one thing. So, we combine those, move it up, and it's the top of the tier two list, or the to be continued list, however you want to look at it?
Well, I'd go along with putting those, you know, into group one, just with the understanding that's really the council that needs to figure out how those are going to get done.
Yeah, because that one, some of those will consider, take quite a bit of consultant assistance and quite a bit of time.
But 5, 6, 7, and 8, I think really affect, would affect immediately the processes that go on here and elsewhere, and I don't like to see them just not, I mean, how do you feel about them? How do you include them?
Well, I'm looking at it, I suppose, in a more holistic way, and the problem I see is this, just forgive the metaphor I may already have worn out, but I think in this policymaking arena, that's part of what we do as a commission, and what staff works on, and what the council does, we're in a position very much like the position public works is in with respect to our physical infrastructure. There's been an awful lot of deferred maintenance, an awful lot of deferred work. And so, right now, we have more things that should be done, meaning really possibly in many or most cases should have been done a long time ago, than can possibly be done in the next year or even two years. So, we're stuck with that. We don't have the number of planning commission meetings required, let alone the number of staff positions required. To get through them all in a foreseeable timeframe, and so, I don't have any problem with keeping them up on the list as close to the things that we can initiate now as possible, but, you know, following on the city manager's comment about the city's history of being better at starting things and finishing them, I think we have to recognize that there are really only a few things that can be initiated and followed through to completion as of this moment.
Yeah, and I'm thinking that interspersed with these more general, long-term, top three items, the noise ordinance, for example, that's directly responsive to public, a lot of public concern, and I don't think that would take that long. Clean air, SEQA talks about, the very, on page three, the second thing of importance includes noise, and I'm going to, and there is a fireplace ordinance that could be, could help the air quality in the town, that would be very simple to do, and, let's see, the...
Bobby, I don't know how you could even say how simple it is.
Because I have the language from, it is, believe me, and...
No, I'm not believing you, and I think that...
Well, can I finish, please? The, also the pools and drought policy changes, I think those are immediate, and the public would, you know, I think that's, there's been a lot of public concern about that. I'm not sure that those things, I'm wondering if they could be interspersed at time, you know, I mean, to just forget them until a year is over seems a little draconian for me. It seems to me there needs to be some interstitial placement of items that can be worked on, I would think, much more quickly than the EIR and, you know, these other more long-term things. I don't think we should just forget about those other items.
Commissioner, what's fascinating is that even if we choose not to forget about these other items, there's only so much staff time and commission time and...
I know, but if they're doing a long-term, you're doing a long-term EIR thing, you can take a break and do, and do one of these things and work on that. I don't know, I think we should be thinking outside the box and think of ways to do that. I mean, maybe we can't.
Well, our out of the box thinking was, I thought Commissioner, or Chairperson Kissner's comments about ad hoc committees potentially, to surface some additional items.
Maybe, maybe that's one of the things, but it would have to be in conjunction.
This is one of the things, I mean, this might be philosophical, but one of the things I think the city has had to challenge to do is accurately listen to its citizens, right?
Yes.
And so, you know, whether it's whoever serves on the commissions, or whether it's staff or whatever, having a better way to hear the voice of the community would seem to be an innovative or a positive approach, something like Chairperson Kissner.
I'm not precluding that.
But in terms, but in terms of like dragging 20 items with us and hoping that we'll get them all done, or that's, Noah, you're really good, you'll get it done, but...
No, I think, I'm just thinking that it'd be nice to be able to make a commitment not to forget those things for a year, and that's what's being suggested. For example, the pre-application concept design review meeting prior to Seminole, that's, I don't know that that would take forever, but it's really important in terms of our process to happen.
Just to chime in, I think we can incorporate that with the zoning code update.
Okay, good.
That's great.
Okay, so, you know, maybe, maybe some of these things could be, but I'm just suggesting that we don't say, okay, we're only going to do that for a year, especially when there are things that are very, that have been of real concern over and over from the public.
And just to chime in, so staff can provide opportunities where, as we move through this process, where other items on the list, they obviously will not be forgotten, because that's what we're trying to do, is memorialize this list to begin the process of working on it. And so, staff can obviously look for opportunities through the process of the zoning code update, design guidelines, to pull in those other items that are on the list that can also be folded into them. 100% we'll be conscious of it. The commission will get this list in every single agenda that comes through them, so they can point out those opportunities as well, and staff will be looking for them.
If I can go back to Lester's comparison here, that this right now could be looked at as a multiple-year capital improvement program. Just so happens that we're the planning commission, so we do planning programs.
I love it, John.
So, this is a, this is a multiple-year planning program, and we've got a list. Some of them are hotter than others, some of them are less important now, like I think David pointed out, the pools drought policy changes. It's been raining lately, if it continues to rain, we may not have to worry about that all of a sudden. We've had another one show up just recently, and great thanks to item 5.1, that all of a sudden, we've noticed, hey, we've got some holes in how our, how construction is handled for our historical structures. We better fix those sometime in the future before somebody starts grinding down even bigger, better, and more important historical structures. So, this list is going to have to be dynamic as well.
John, there's some other things I think we need to look at.
Yes, thank you.
I think one of the things that we found, where we've had three recently, is lost use permits, or the fact that people don't have use permits, or the city can't find them.
Can't hear you, Grace.
And how do we, how do we establish a baseline for going forward with these people? Because they're going to keep coming back for more changes.
But like, but like the capital improvement program for water and sewer...
That's correct.
You've got to start with the things that form the basis of your system first. So, let's face it, if you're, if you're, but if you're a planner, it's the general plan, and it's the zoning code.
Well, John...
Everything else is driven off those two animals.
I've been working on the general plan since 2007. You don't need to tell me how important I feel of general plan.
Yeah, I know, but those are, those are the two most important things, and because of our approach to the zoning code, you know, the design guidelines moves along with that.
That's correct.
So, you know, if you're going to, if you're going to work on your system, those are the things we've got to fix first. Everything else follows after that, and I, and I like your idea that, geez, it'd be nice if we began to pick off some of these, but then, here's David's idea, that maybe we can pick off some small chunks of the zoning code. I think he pointed out the food truck ordinance. I think that may be something we can pick off. I don't know... I, I don't know what Lester thinks, I know, I know he doesn't want to ride a horse unless he's sure he's got the seatbelt on it, but, you know, this may be the, the kind of saddle we can get into and make it work and make it look like, hey, we are making, we got, we got a win here.
You know, my metaphor may have been inept, I, I just.
The visual was great.
I've been through this kind of process too many times not to remember how many times something I thought was going to be quick and easy turned out to be time-consuming and difficult. So I think it's really hard now, sitting here, looking at items on this list, to really know what's going to be easy and what isn't. We make our best guess, pick something and go, sure, I've got no problem with that. I think, uh, to the extent we can be, a, a bit of opportunism is a good thing, uh, but it should always be with, you know, as it will be, with guidance from staff and some awareness of all the other things looming on our agendas because, um, we do need, I think, to be, you know, resolutely committed to finishing what we start. I think that's probably, you know, in the background, the most important thing we can do as we take these things on.
I certainly don't agree. I'm just wondering, um, the percentage, I mean, we tend to remember pain more than pleasure. I'm wondering the percentage of time when things you thought would be, take longer, took shorter, is there any comparison at all?
Well.
Well, I, I've, I've had that experience too, but, but I think in this public process where getting, uh, public input is so important and where the course that dialogue with the public, uh, takes is so inherently unpredictable, you'll find more things turn out to be more difficult than you thought in the reverse.
But I, I don't disagree with you at all, in fact, I agree with you. But I'm thinking in terms of you want these things to be, to go, to be finished, of course, I'm just suggesting that shorter items can be started and finished while this is going on, that's all.
All right, let me open public comment and then I'd like to talk, I would like to find out if Noah has what he needs. Uh, do you have any public comment? No? I knew you would.
Well, none, none other than just again, thank you for all the work that you're doing for our city. Thank you.
All right, Noah, do you, do you have enough to go on at this point?
Well, I want to add, I want clear commission support if, if this, this is what I think I'm hearing, that the general plan, EIR, the creation of design guidelines and a zoning code cleanup slash update are the top three priorities from the commission on this list.
All right, I have one other thing because you promised me that, um, that we would see the general plan in its final form as soon as you can clean it up. And, and I would, I'm going to hold you to that.
No problem, I, yeah, so.
I think that's important that we see that.
I'll talk about that in department report.
Before we get the EIR back.
Okay, if, if I could add a couple things to that.
I mean, you said you, you could do that in some period of time.
Yes.
And, and I would think that we would all like to see that so that when we see the other, that we're certain that everything's.
Yes.
Grace, if I could add a couple things to that? Yes, indeed, 1, 2, 3, okay? 9 and 10 combined and that becomes essentially the top of the number two list or the bottom of the number one list.
That's correct.
Okay? Uh, we want to see essentially an estimate of time on these by person years, by, I don't care, but person years would be a good thing.
John, I don't think we can see that until, until he gets through with the, until he, until they get through with the, the council's.
But I think, I think he can make an estimate off the top of your head, I think several of us.
As long as you say time and not date.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm talking about how long he thinks this is going to take kind of thing, you know?
As long as we don't take it that he says a month that we think it's going to happen by the end of October.
No, no, and we want to see it as a concerted list and we want to see some nice name on top that implies it is indeed some equivalent to a capital improvement program.
It's great to have multiple bosses, well, we're not your boss, but it's good, great to have multiple, you know, we're, we're five horses, we're not all pulling in identical directions, although, um, not bad, pretty good.
By the way, I have copies of.
Plus you've got a boss.
And then I'll meet with the next five in a week.
I have copies.
And they're more important than we are, way more.
I have copies here of SB 15 as of the end of, the 1st of September. I have copies of, um, what was the other one?
SB 75?
No, I've got a copy of EH, EHs, which is of, of what they think of SB, um, 75.
75.
And I have 75 here and this is the latest edition of it that was September the 1st. And that's what I have, if anybody's interested in any of that, I have, I have copies and be happy to provide them to you.
And if you, if you can send me what you have or I can happily send that, so SB 75.
I can give them to you and then you can send them out.
That's perfect. SB 75 is referenced in the staff report, it's one of close to 100 bills traveling through the legislature right now regarding housing. I, that one is seeming to get a lot of traction, is likely to pass. Essentially, it's putting more teeth into arena numbers is, is the gist of what it's going to try to do. But, but before, before we, so I just want to reiterate what I heard from the commission, which is general plan, design guidelines, zoning code are top list, obviously incorporating all of four and, 4A through G and 5 into that number four. And then the next most important item is the housing plan, workforce housing item that was identified, uh, two weeks ago when we met with the city council. Staff is going to begin putting together work plans for those two items that are going to be in-house, the design guidelines and the zoning code update, and that will include timelines, process, all of those things that we'll bring back before the planning commission and city council would like to see it to get them blessed, provide input for, for modifying them. And through that process, we will also look for opportunities to check in with other items on the list where we can effectively and efficiently tackle them.
I concur.
All right. I think that's it.
Where'd you get that idea?
Do we have any department reports or agenda forecast?
Yeah, the only thing I'd like to say for the department report is Turley Flats, the eight unit affordable housing project on Pope Street has begun construction, so we are very happy to have issued those building permits, some funding from the city has been committed and is, is, we're paying checks to folks who are doing work and, um, it's very exciting to see that moving forward. And I know our town, St. Helena, is very close behind them on getting their final map recorded and they're very much interested in starting construction on their side as soon as possible as well. So we are making some traction on getting some affordable housing units built in this community and that feels very good.
That's wonderful. Thank you very much for your patience tonight, Mr. Fauch. Please adjourn.